Good evening.
Good evening.
We called the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Mosley has the medium in profit appetite. Thank you, everybody in the area. We got a lot of guests in the house today. Good to see everyone of you here for your various reasons. We're going to celebrate some in just a little while. Thank you so much for coming. This is the, young people, this is the, I say, Mr. Scott's, Scott's All-Stars. Okay, you're here. Okay, all right. This is, this is the first monthly meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissions. We meet twice a month. This is the first, first Tuesday. Then we meet the third Thursday at five o'clock. Not only you invited today, but you invited anytime we meet. Our meetings are also live streamed, so at your pleasure, young people, you get to look at the meeting and just kind of see how government works behind the scenes. This is a glance of how it works behind the scenes. One of the things we do is entertain young people. One thing we do sometimes, too, is to recognize people for various acts of service to Liberty County. So today, let me go ahead and say this, our special guest for recognition, let me do it this way. The Scott's All-Stars, where you stand, Mr. Scott's group, you stand, good to have you here to see how government works. Give them a hand for being here. Thank you. Now, listen, if I, if I named you wrong, I apologize. I'm just used to Mr. Scott working with this. Is that still what the group is called, or is another name? Say again? That's the name? Okay, good, good to have you here. And also, to my left, this side is, wearing the blue and gold, is the Bradwell Institute, Lady Tiggo's in the house today. You think we don't know? We do, we knew how to say B-I. You know. Caught y'all off guard, didn't I? Good to have you all in the house today also. Let's see, I'm looking for, there he is, there he is. Bishop Page is here to lead us in our prayer, and I'll, 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 please stand now for the invocation and the prayer. Everybody, please stand.
Our Father and our God, how excellent is your name, and how grateful we are to gather in this place to lift up your name before this meeting. Thank you for every person that's under the sound of my voice, everyone that's here to conduct the business of Liberty County. Thank you for the wisdom, the understanding, and the guidance that you will provide on this great day, that you have made in the mighty name of Jesus, and we give you praise. Amen and amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, I know we're going to have a, a little bit of an issue because this is the first time since I've been on the board that there's no time for the meeting. What, what time did we start?
We started maybe six oh?
Six oh five.
Five, yeah.
Did we record that?
Yes, it's usually recorded. Well, well, I'm, I'm used to it being recorded, yeah.
It's on.
Yeah.
Can't you hear me? Can you hear me now?
It's on. Okay. I hear it, I hear it. Yeah, trying to make sure I'm speaking to mine.
Want to say hello?
Speaking to mine also. All right. At this time, proclamation, autism awareness month. It says Ms. Gail Dent. I don't see Ms. Dent. Where, where is she? Such a crowded day, I didn't see you back there, Ms. Dent. Good to have you and your team, your support team. I feel who I recognize. Hello, sir? Would you, you want to make the statement first, and then Mr. Mosley read the proclamation?
Yes, I guess so. We are the unique puzzle pack, part of a, it's about 500 that are, claim to be a puzzle packer, part of the autism support group. We have a core group of about 30 to 40 that attend most of the functions and the meeting. These are some of the people here, and what we do is search for and offer resources for families with autism, to help them better, be a, be a better advocate for their child, or their person with autism, excuse me. We teach how to do IEPs, how to be able to go to the meetings and to advocate for their child, and to help and work with the teachers to make life easier and better, and let the child be more comfortable in the school setting. A lot of the autism children are nonverbal, don't hear well, they are antisocial, that there are so many things that go along with it. So when we do the IEPs, we try to make it so that the child has a program to abide by, to go, to have a better day at school and in life. That's some of what we do. And we have parties.
You gotta have a party. Thank you.
That's, that's all I wanted to say today.
Thank you. Ms. Mosley?
Proclamation, designating April 2025 to be Autism Awareness Month. Whereas, autism spectrum disorder is a result of a neurological disorder that can affect anyone, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or social, social economic background. And whereas, autism spectrum disorder affects 1 in 68 children in the United States and approximately 75,000 individuals in Massachusetts as of 2014. And whereas, males are almost five times more likely to be affected by autism spectrum disorder than females. And whereas, autism spectrum disorder is estimated to be the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States by the Centers of Disease Control and Autism and Developmental Disabilities Monitoring. And whereas, symptoms and characteristics of autism spectrum disorder present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impacts on an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal and nonverbal communications. And whereas, early diagnosis and intervention, as well as ongoing support from family, doctors, therapists, and educators, can positively impact persons with autism spectrum disorder to achieve better outcomes. And whereas, persons with autism spectrum disorder should have access to appropriate services throughout their lifetime, so that they may achieve their greatest potential and lead happy and productive lives within their communities. Therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, and the Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Autism Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of Liberty County to take cognizance of this event and participate faithfully in its observance, so declared on this first day of April 2025.
Thank you. Thank you. One thing, I apologize, I did not bring blue light bulbs for y'all this time. If I can get hold of some more, I'll get you some.
We would have it happen.
Thank you.
Now, generally, what happens is you all come around.
Okay.
For a photo op. Okay. Come on around, come on around. Gather in. Ms. Gail.
Come on, Ms. Gail.
Come on.
It's out in here.
Yeah. He didn't want to.
Right there?
You got the ones coming.
You got the ones coming.
Let's see.
Cheese for the camera?
Ready?
Say cheese.
Oh, that's so beautiful.
Good job, Beverly.
Autism Awareness Month on three. One, two, three.
Autism Awareness Month.
A lot of cheeses.
The kids are getting restless.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank y'all so much. And I listened to the thing, and I said thank you to the mentors, and thank you for hearing me. I meant directors.
We know what you're saying.
Star Wars, Titanic, Star Wars.
We can go get ice cream.
Yeah. That's not the way to do it.
Yep.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you all now, special recognition. Mr. Mosley, you want to lead us in that? We, it says favorite son, but we know there could be several, but tonight, there's only one.
Mr. Joseph W. Brown and Mr. Kim Brown, would you come forward, please?
You still in charge, Joey, go ahead.
As many of you all know, he'll make remarks again, and we got to watch our composure. This fine gentleman has, has dedicated 43 years total to service in Liberty County, Georgia, to the citizens of Liberty County, Georgia, and today's his first official day of being retired.
Right.
On last week, we took the opportunity to break bread with him and his family, and that was a great occasion. We enjoyed it. Many thoughts and sentiments were shared from the community, as well as from the commissioners that were there. And commissioners, many of us shared our sentiments with him at the last meeting, but we want to do something that's a little bit, add a little more icing to the cake. So this proclamation's been prepared for him, something he can hang on his wall for years and years to come. So, Mr. Mosley, if you will read the proclamation, we'd appreciate it, sir.
A proclamation honoring Mr. Joseph W. Brown for his 43 years of service and contributions to Liberty County. That, whereas, Mr. Joseph Joey W. Brown has served the Liberty County Board of Commissioners as the Assistant County Administrator from October 1, 1984, to April 1, 1991, until his promotion to County Administrator on April 2, 1991, a position that he has held until his retirement. And whereas, during his tenure, Joey has been a wise and prudent servant, a steward in the budgeting and expenditure of county funds. And whereas, Joey has been involved in numerous capital projects and activities that have improved the conditions and delivery of services for county staff and the quality of life of the citizens of Liberty County. Among them include the planning and construction of the Justice Center, the Live Oaks Library, Hinesville Branch, new fire station facilities, including Miller Park Fire Station, Gun Branch Fire Station, Island Fire Station, and Island White substations. Recreation facilities including James Brown Park, Gil Park, Recreation Department Headquarters, Sammy B. Harris Gymnasium, Charles Schuman Gym, and various other park improvement projects. And EMS upgrades included in construction of a new facility for the Midway Area, renovations to the Hinesville Station, and a new administrative train is currently under construction. And whereas, Joey has the vision and foresight in establishing the county's first integrated 911 system and the county's first full-time fire department. During the latter part of his tenure, Joey also facilitated the county's automation of payroll and assisted the Liberty County Sheriff Office with technological upgrades. And whereas, Joey assisted all constitutional officers in the efforts to provide optimal services to the citizens of Liberty County, and now therefore be resolved by the members of the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County this first day of April 2025 as follows, that this proclamation expresses their sincere appreciation and that of the citizens, constitutional officers, and staff of this county to Mr. Brown for his dedicated service to the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, Liberty County Sheriff Office, and all other constitutional officers for 43 years. That this proclamation encourage all Liberty County employees, businesses, and residents joining in this appreciation and retirement celebration of Mr. Joseph W. Brown. In witness thereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause to seal Liberty County to be herein affixed, Mr. Donald L. Lovett.
Very short. And I said this the other day, it's a...
Mr. Brown, you still have my tissue paper from the other day.
Your tissue paper, I think I took it last time. I'll bring it back. Wow, it's, it's humbling, it's, I said this the other day a little bit, too, but the love that this commission, the professionalism that this commission and, and those in the past have demonstrated for the county and support for the county administrator is enormous. I, I don't know of another county where that's occurred. Very kind in here to say he was prudent with the money. I think the other day, he said he could take the bronze off a penny, somebody said that. My wife probably would agree with you at that. I, I really don't know what to say. I'm, I won't tear up. I, I've got to do better in my retirement. I turkey hunted this morning, didn't have any luck. So, Mr. Blood, that's got to be better. But it does give me time to get out and think about the Lord, and think about all the many blessings he's given me and my family, and to my family, my wonderful wife, Kim, of almost 40 years. She stood by my side, and through, through good and bad, ups and downs. But I, I am very, very, very proud that you let me serve as part of your team. You've got a tremendous team, there's a tremendous team of constitutional officers and employees in this county, second to none. You do amazing things, and there are more amazing things to come under your, under the new leadership that's here, and I am very proud to have been part of that, too. So, I'm humbled, I love you, and I hope God blesses each of you and your families, and yes, I've still got the same phone number, so if you need me, you give me a call anytime day or night, and I'll come to you to help you, and you know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joey.
How you doing, man? I haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see y'all.
Good to see y'all.
You doing turkey hunting?
I know.
I have terrible luck with that, too.
You good, Mary?
Good, I'm good.
All right? All right? Joey Brown on three. One, two, three.
Joey Brown.
Joey Brown.
Joey, how about you just invade it, so we put it in there on the walls?
Excuse me.
Just from a young folk, Mr. Brown has served as county administrator for most of those 43 years, so he has been awarded for his retirement, recognized for his retirement. Those persons you see up here are elected to serve in their respective areas of the county, so wherever you live...
county administrator is enormous. I don't know of another county where that's occurred. Very kind in here to say he was prudent with the money. I think the other day he said he could take the bronze off a penny, somebody said that. My wife probably would agree with you at that. I really don't know what to say. I won't tear up. I've got to do better in my retirement. I turkey hunted this morning, didn't have any luck. So Mr. Blood, that's got to be better. But it does give me time to get out and think about the Lord and think about all the many blessings he's given me and my family. And to my family, my wonderful wife, Kim, of almost forty years. She stood by my side and through good and bad, ups and downs. But I am very, very, very proud that you let me serve as part of your team. You've got a tremendous team. There's a tremendous team of constitutional officers and employees in this county, second to none. You do amazing things, and there are more amazing things to come under your, under the new leadership that's here. And I am very proud to have been part of that too. So I'm humbled, I love you, and I hope God blesses each of you and your families. And yes, I've still got the same phone number. So if you need me, you give me a call anytime, day or night, and I'll come to you to help you, and you know that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joey.
How you doing, man? I haven't seen you in a while.
Good to see y'all.
Good to see y'all.
You doing turkey hunting?
I know. I have terrible luck with it too.
You good, Mary?
Good, I'm good.
Turkey. All right, Joey Brown on three, one, two, three.
Joey Brown.
Joe, how about you just invade it so we put it in there on the walls?
Just from a young folk, Mr. Brown has served as county administrator for most of those forty-three years. So he has been awarded for his retirement, recognized for his retirement. Those persons you see up here are elected to serve in their respective areas of the county. So wherever you live, one of these people represent you. But the day-to-day work of the county has been in his hands for a lot of years. So he's retiring now, so we're recognizing him for his services at the county, just so you have an idea of what's going on. We are elected from different areas, but he was the, I guess, kind of like the principal of the school, you know, Dr. Pierce Superintendent, but he's the principal. So he actually did the day-to-day management of the county, yeah. Yeah, superintendent, that's right, yeah, of the council. That's kind of giving you an idea of what he's being recognized for. And he's done the job very, very well. Now, you very rarely hear someone put that many years in, because now the new trend is that people move around, they stay a few years. But Coach Baker, I applaud you for being there. How long did Coach snap, Bradwell?
Thirty.
Thirty years. Another longevity case here. And especially good when you have local people who will stay home and help to give back to their local community. Everybody carry around to the ATL or to Washington DC, but some folks stay at home and help to make the county the county that it is now. So we applaud that. So young people, when you, we don't mind you going off, but just don't forget where home is, where home is, all right. Approval of the minutes for March. Chair and tenor motion.
Come on.
March 4th and March 20th. Motion and second for discussion. All in favor, by show of hands, please. Minutes are approved. Recognition, Bradwell Institute Lady Tigers Basketball Team. Who has those certificates? I had a conversation with Coach Baker a little while ago, and so good to see you all, young ladies. I hope while you're here being recognized, you're also getting a glimpse of what goes on in your county. If you don't know, LCRD comes under the county. That's a county function, just giving an example. The last mention in the library, that's a county function. So those are some of the kind of things that the county has to supervise. So Coach Baker, I know you said there's a brave young person in that audience who would come and just share with us. Coach, if you want to come first, it's at your pleasure, then who will be your young ambassadors that will come and give their thoughts on, yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I just want to say that, thank you all to the commission for recognizing our young ladies. You know, a lot of times we talk about young people and a lot of the negativity and negative things that go on with them. So we definitely need to applaud them when they're doing something productive. So I thank you for recognizing them for their accomplishment this year. We really had a really, really good season. Ended up being twenty-six and four, won the region, first place in the region. And also went to the final four, which is the first time that's been done in twenty-two years. So, and we fell a little short there, but we had a really, really good season. So I'm just very, very proud of them. And again, thank you all for your recognition. Now I'm going to bring before you one of our senior players, which is Ms. Jordan Rogers.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Jordan.
To be honest, the main thing I can say is that the people that you see behind me, those are my family. So the season was hard. We suffered a lot of losses the year before, but we was able to pull through and we made it. And we did a great job, in my personal opinion. And there's not really much I can say. I mean, our work speaks for itself, so.
What would you tell those coming behind you? What would you tell those who are trying to?
For those coming behind me, I would say that even though it may look good, it took a lot of bad to get to where we are. And no matter what you may think it is, never take it for face value or surface value, and understand that hard work does pay off.
You may or may not know, that's being livestreamed, so all the world heard you say that today. All right, let's see. I'm trying to see what's the best way to do this. I guess commissioners, let's have them come down, and then we'll shake their hands. Is that the best way to do it? Commissioners, go down and... All right, the first one was Tatiana Anderson. If you just go down that road, they would shake their hands. Am I doing all right as far as the livestreams? I need to stand here. Need a microphone. Can I do that? All right. Jordan Rogers. Stay up for a group picture, you guys, if we will, okay? Sanaya Garner, I got it right. Kayla Kirkland. Jamia, is it Ausley or Osley? Ausley, Jamia? Janaya Blevins. Michaela Olivera. Is it Olivera, Oliverian? Olivera, Olivera. Talasia Weathersby. Maya Harmon. Destiny McLamore. This one grew up next to me, kind of sort of. Lamont and Sarah. Ooh. Heather Garrett. Kate Upskurn. Janaya Bush. Is it Ralia? Is that right? Ralia Rivers? Paris Parham. Congratulations. Sierra Williams. Chanel Bowens. Head coach, let's see, didn't I see that right? Trying to navigate, yeah. Head coach, Fay Baker. Coach. Dana King, assistant coach. Ms. King. Assistant coach, Deanna Dawson. Assistant coach, Kiara Hall. Photographer. Assistant coach, Jason Baker. And Antonice Babbs. Coach Baker, you want to talk about, I know some of your players made region and all that kind of, give them the accolades while they're here.
All right. Yes, we had several players that made all-region. Let me make sure I can remember. Second team all-region. That was Jamia Ausley, who's not here. And also, it was one more. Who was the other one? Were you second team? Okay. Tati, step out. Tati made a second-team all-region as well, okay? And we had Janaya Blevins, who was honorable mention, all-region. And then first-team all-region was Jordan Rogers. Janaya Bush. And then our region, oh, our co-freshman player of the year, Destiny McLamore. And then our region player of the year was Paris Parham. And Paris Parham also made All-State.
Thank you. Give it up for the Bradwell Lady Tigers. Thank you so much. Did we get the picture? Got it? Congratulations again, ladies. Have a successful end of the school year. Mid-month First Presbyterian Boys will be awarded for their state championship. Commissioner Frasier, you working on the LCRD team you want to recognize?
I think they'll be here at our next meeting.
Okay, all right.
The eight U and ten U, because one for basketball, the other one for soccer.
All right, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Maria, we need the names so she can get the certificates ready.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we're over now. Departmental reports, Ms. Parks.
Good afternoon, everyone.
How are you?
Good. Chairman Lovett and the board. Tonight I just have rezoning petition and a PUD amendment, 2025-007, for Liberty County. A rezoning petition has been submitted by Mary Ann Elaine Smith on behalf of owner, the owner's Laurelview Properties LLC for a PUD revision to rezon two-hundred-and-nine acres from I-1, which is industrial, to PUD, which is planned unit development, for residential development. This proposed PUD revision will be added to the existing Laurelview PUD. The property is located off of Islands Highway and is, the map and parcel is 302-001, and it's a portion thereof. This is just the public notifications, the legal ads, and the rezoning signs on the property. The vicinity map, the blue area is the, all of the existing PUD, but the area just in the pink here is what we'll be talking about today. That's the vicinity map of the two-hundred-and-nine acres. And we did another vicinity map where you could sort of see, that's just the area that we'll be talking about today. This is the approximate area of the two-hundred acres. And this is the existing PUD that's here. This is the existing Laurelview PUD, and this is what is proposed. Next, we have the zoning map. And again, too, the area in the dark green is the PUD. The area in the red is the whole entire parcel. And this here, again, the subject site is the two-hundred-and-nine. And we have some ag land, of course, in the green. The gray is industrial, and the darker green is the PUD. Next, we just have a floodplain map, and there is some flood area just in this top corner here, is in the AE's flood zone. The next slide we have is just a wetlands map, and there is a small amount. We have some wetlands here and on this side of the area that we're talking about today. The next slide is a plat. It's just the meets and bounds survey showing the outline of the proposed two-hundred-and-nine acres. There is, this road coming out here would match up to an existing road that's already in Tradeport East. Would kind of meet up, meet up there. The next slide is the district map showing as-is. This area again is, here is what we're talking about. And the next slide will be the proposed district. The proposed acreage is approved. It will be included into the yellow residential part. The total will increase about five-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, I believe, for the yellow, which is the residential. The narrative, the Laurelview PUD is a master plan, as a planned unit development in accord with the Code of Ordinances for Liberty County. As a part of its submission, the site developer, Laurelview Properties LLC, submitted development standards establishing development districts and zoning criteria within the planned community. On November 5 of 2024, those standards were adopted by Liberty County Board of Commissioners and the City of Midway on November 12. And the chart just gives the current acreage as a breakdown of what the PUD would realize. And I would like to add too, change in, and Ms. Smith can elaborate on this, but change in the zoning to I-1 would take away about 1.25 million square feet of warehouses and add, or be replacing it with residential homes. Just have some pictures here. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the site. This is just going back toward Midway. This is going toward the coast. This is the new Dorchester Village Road. The property is right across the street. And we added in just another photo of the warehouses across the street from this existing property. And then I'll get into the zoning analysis. Does the property have reasonable economic value as currently zoned? Yes, it does. Does the proposed use conform with the Fort Stewart-Jaleh study? It does. Does the proposed use conform with the Liberty County Comp Plan? The existing Comp Plan designates this property as industrial, and the proposed comprehensive plan designates this property as mixed-use. Would there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? It would not. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? It is. Will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, or the provision of public safety? A traffic study by the professional traffic operations engineer is required to mitigate any undue burdens. Would this allow a short-term gain at the expense of the local long-term goals? No, it would not. This would not cause a domino effect? Are there any unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? There was none noted. The parcel is in, portions of the property are in the flood zone AE. Is this spot zoning and unrelated to the existing patterns of development? No, it's not. And are there any unique conditions which support approval or denial? There's none. And the LCPC on, the LCPC recommendations at the March 18 meeting was approval with standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. The petitioner here.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith. We're familiar, hello? Young people, let's see, how can I help to make this user-friendly? This property, property, all property in Liberty County has a special zoning which indicates what can be located there. This property was rezoned for industrial, which means like Target down in, excuse me, Midway, Tire Rack. I'm not sure if you're familiar with those places down there. So now, this request is to change the zoning from industrial to residential. Residential means home building. Okay? With me? All right.
Thank you, Lori. Good evening. Thank you all for hearing us again tonight. We appreciate it. I'm going to just talk on some things that Lori's already covered and just make sure that any questions in detail that we have at this point are addressed. And if you all have any questions after, we'd be happy to address those. Again, this evening is just adding the two-hundred-and-nine acres. It's just adjacent to the existing PUD that's already been approved into this PUD. As it stands right now, that two-hundred-and-nine acres is zoned industrial. And there are no other changes to the existing PUD other than adding those two-hundred-and-nine acres into the residential portion of that. at a later date as these different areas get developed. Then specific issues will be addressed, and I'm sure that will be forthcoming. Just to review, the vision is unchanged for the PUD. And it's to create a cohesive mixed-use community and highlights and preserves the existing natural resources, history, and provides services, retail, and recreation to local and regional residents as well as interstate travelers. It has all the different components, as you can see. Changes a little bit, the preserve large wetlands. At this point, we're still looking at about 30%, but 386 acres as we have estimated right now. And I want to reiterate the last couple, that there will be a variety of housing types and prices, and this will, of course, be done in phased development. The purpose of getting, bringing this 209 acres into the PUD and changing it from industrial is to meet the housing shortage. There's one that exists now, and as you all know, there's an even larger one projected. The effect of changing this into residential instead of industrial will replace a proposed and allowed 1.25 million square feet of industrial warehouse with approximately 670 homes. The initial, also, in addition, the initial phase of development will now be able to start at both ends, and I'll show you in a minute on the plan, so that the, both ends of the road will start. So that won't be just started from one end and go all the way to the, to the other side. It'll start at both sides. This, again, is the existing with in gray on the left. That's showing the 209 acres as industrial. And as proposed, you see that it goes seamlessly from the existing residential over and will go into that well. This just sort of breaks down what the, now, the amount of acreage is for each of the districts. And this breaks, breaks it down both as far as type of development, as far as residential. It's still about 30% of the total 1,200 some odd acres is wetlands, and just about 9% of it will be commercial. And over 50%, over 55% will be residential with about approximately 3,300 residences ultimately in the development. I wanted to take a step back and look at this exit overall from a little bit bigger picture. You can see some of the existing warehouses as they come off of both Islands Highway and Sunberry Road. And then also, to the east of this development is the Dorchester Hunting Preserve, which is both in, all of that is in preservation. That is a little over 2,000 acres that's in preservation to our east. And I think that that sets a, certainly a nice buffer into the surrounding communities. As far as valuation and tax revenue, this is just the 209 acres. Again, roughly 670 homes. That would produce, upon completion and build-out, a property tax revenue of a little over 3.3 million. I've been told my valuation is a little conservative, but this is, you know, without an inflation estimate. Here's the new revised PUD in totality. So the total value at build-out is estimated to be over 1.1 billion with an annual property tax revenue of almost 19 million and then sales tax revenue of 11 for a total of about $30 million annual tax revenue. Any questions?
Just got, I guess, go back to that road, the secondary road coming out.
Right there.
How, how close is that road to the Dorchester, to the school?
Oh, come here. I don't even know which one. It's not shown on there yet. It's maybe on my bigger one.
If he changes it for us.
It's not shown on any of these. Let me get back to my presentation, and I'll show you on that bigger one. That's kind of why I'm...
Yeah, it'll show a little bit.
Okay. Now, one other question, Mr. Chair. With all of this projection going on, is the industrial authority going to provide you water and sewage?
Yes, sir. We're in constant conversations with them about, you know, ongoing development and, and also, on the other side, with people interested in doing development and building homes. And we understand they're, they will be able to provide, and we won't get out ahead of that, if you will. But, and again, that's with it being phased and what's existing and what's planned, it will be able to be covered.
What do you think your timeline is for the phasing? How many years before it's, any idea?
We believe, and you will hopefully be seeing something more specific, you know, within the coming months, but we believe that the first homes should be constructed in 2026. And, and that will ramp up, but as you know, these things take a, take a little bit of time. But we think it'll probably start in 2026. And all of the home builders will do so based on the market. What they build, how many they build, some, but, so none are going to get too far out in front of market demand. But we expect to start off around 150 a year, and I think that will wrap up and probably peak several times that, and then ratchet back down is what we project. Again, crystal balling that situation. But at minimum five years, and we think probably closer to 10 or more.
Mr. Chair, what she just said, how are we going to push the infrastructure traffic-wise down there with the amount of houses coming? Because we really need to take a serious look at that.
The, well, the Islands Highway improvement, it's called T-Sloss. Islands Highway Improvement Plan is in place. I'm sorry, Trent, Trent's here, Trent's here. Which he has been trying to, Trent, you might want to come to the microphone. The idea is that it will be phased in, which ideally, it would have been there before, but that won't happen because it's too expensive to do that way. But we're trying to work it with our, that's why the good thing that they're not doing it all overnight, so it's going to be phased in. So all that traffic won't be there at the very beginning. It'll slowly build its way up there. By that time, hopefully, we have the improvements in place.
I don't know. He'll be able to answer the question far better, but yes, I actually tapped Trent before this meeting and said, I'm going to be bugging you a little more. But we've already started having conversations on how this all works together.
Yes, sir. So the way that the traffic canal works, the four lanes that we've got planned will work well with this development. So it'll be, it'll be able to handle the capacity that we got. And what we're designing will handle the capacity from this PUD. So we just need to be able to get out there, get those transportation agreements done, and be able to get this moved into construction phase.
And, and the traffic light, talk about that. One of you all addressed them.
So there'll be two traffic lights as part of our plan. The first traffic light will be at the entrance to Dorchester Village Road, where they, the new, new segment is coming out now. Then there'll be a second red light that is at the entrance to Trade Port East. Right now, we haven't evaluated the signal that far down, but, you know, we're going to go back and look and review to make sure that it doesn't require a signal, but most likely not because there will be an alternate route out with a signal. And so you got to make your best guess on which way is the traffic going to leave and where's it going to hit. But I think we're, we're sitting good for where we are with this. But we, we had a long conversation with them when we were putting that traffic study together about what was coming, and I think we have some pretty realistic numbers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The Hook, Hooker Group, they're not in there no more, right?
The, the company itself has, has or will leave, but the building will still be used for the same purpose by Sofivea. So you won't notice...
Any difference.
Any difference, you know, so. I know this is all residential. What's the latest on, on commercials? Is that anywhere in?
Just getting started.
Just getting started.
Yes, I'm just getting started on that. Hitting the ground running on that. Obviously, for a lot of these commercial uses, having new rooftops right there is going to really help support people to make decisions to come there. Interstate traffic is a, is a great thing, and that'll, that will bring some types of commercial users in. But the rooftops will get the things I think people are probably most excited about. Services and groceries.
Yeah, there you go. We all know the formula, the commercial to compensate for the residential. So we look forward to that commercial.
Absolutely.
I know there's some already happening a little bit further down the road. And I want to applaud you all again with the slide that talks about the public access to... Very rarely have we found a developer who has, what's the word, y'all? Planned for bike and walking trails, recreational lakes in parks that the general public has access to. So that, that puts you way up above a lot of others who bring development in Liberty County. So, and we can't appreciate that enough.
Well, we really feel like we want this to be a part of the community, but also sort of a community within itself, and for people to be able to come there and be there. Large existing lake, future marina, walking trails throughout. We think that it'll be, you know, I mean, I'm hoping there's going to be a farmer's market. I'm hoping there's going to be, you know, weekend activity, concerts, where there are places where, again, people coming off the interstate might stop to get gas and say, hmm, what's happening here? What, and what is this Liberty County all about? And you know how I feel about that. But then also that everybody in the existing community and the people who live in the new homes can all be together and, and, you know, enjoy sort of the best of Liberty County.
Ms. Smith, with everything we've talked about here, the water and the sewage is a big player. Do you have a backup plan in case the water and sewer infrastructure doesn't meet your timeline of development?
Well, as, like I said, we are, I'll say we're working closely. We, we might be driving them crazy, might be a little more accurate, but we, we have several years of projected development that we will be able to, to do. And I think that it'll, it'll match up nicely with when new opportunities are available. So we have sort of constant conversations and, and on the edge of bugging a little bit, but just to make sure that we understand and are communicating correctly to the builders that, you know, everything's going to be available. Once things get specific, of course, they'll have to sit down and get will-serv letters, and when they come to you, they'll have that, you know, and again, in a phased manner. And, but we, so I guess Plan B is, you know, measure twice, cut once. We're trying to make sure we're setting expectations correctly and making sure that while we want to meet the, the demand for housing, that we're also, you know, we, we don't want anybody getting out in front of the car too much.
Can you speak to the, last, variety of housing types? What's that discussion? And if it's premature, you don't have to say, I'm just...
Well, I, I think, you know, it's not theoretically premature. I think, you know, just by the nature of this land, and it's over 1,200 acres, there's room for everybody. And, you know, I think that there, there's room for different types, just like we need different types of housing. Certainly, I would presume that on the waterfront and marshfront, those are probably going to be much larger lots, most likely custom-built homes and higher value. But we definitely allow for in our zoning for there to be apartments, condos, townhouses, of course, larger homes, smaller homes. And I do think it's going to be done, and those decisions ultimately made by exactly what's built, by home builders that do a lot of underwriting and a lot of study, and not just for Liberty County, but in the region. Because this becomes very quickly a, I'll call it a super-regional site for housing. If you measure how long it takes, for instance, to drive to the Hyundai plant or, you know, down to Brunswick, it's Liberty County, but it's even a little bit bigger than that. And so I think it'll be something that they see where the need is, and they do a lot of time and study on exactly where the gaps are in the market. And most of them, as well, that we're talking to right now, have the ability to change sort of midstream. You know, if they, if they come in and, let's say, they're, you know, going to work on, let's say, this 209 acres, they have different types of housing in their arsenal. So they would have to build within the existing zoning, but they might switch and do something a little bit bigger, depending on, you know, what the sort of demand is, which is another reason why they do it in a phased manner, you know, and, and don't just throw up more homes than is needed. There, I think, I think, you know, we're, no one said this, but I, I think we all remember that the housing issues of, I'll say, recent past, and not necessarily in this market, but nationwide. I think everybody's, which is good. It keeps everybody sort of prudent in what they decide to do and thoughtful. And I want to answer your question about school. Okay, I'm trying to see if I can see it because it's really small on here.
Where's Islands Highway? Yeah. See, they're on the backside of Trade Port East. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes, sir. And it would tie into the Sunberry Road, not Islands Highway.
Yeah. Their property's on the backside of Trade Port East.
Right, because Islands Highway, yeah, kind of, you know, loops around, but it's, so it's around the curve, and I don't know.
So actually, you all will be coming back out to the Sunberry Road.
Right. This will come out right here on the Sunberry, and then that road will tie into the existing Trade Port Road. But this will, but this will go this way. Back to here.
So you're going to start on both ends?
Right. I think, yes. I think that the plan is to, again, I think with the commercial here and this, this, you know, residential area, and then this residential area. So I think the roads on both ends should start, not necessarily exactly the same time, but about the same time. Rather as before, we added this 209 acres, we were starting here and working our way all the way around. I think now we'll start from both sides and work our way to the middle.
Okay. All right. Just, just a comment, only because I've been in conversation lately about coastal resiliency. Take my time to get the word out. So as, as builders build, please keep that in mind. You got a lot of waterways in the area, wetlands, so on and so forth. So let's just be careful about the environment as well as to ensure we do our best that homes are built where they are for, for the coastal area.
Absolutely.
And all that comes with that.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, and we're in the process right now of getting all the wetlands exactly delineated, and, you know, different maps show different things. But within like the AE flood zone, most of those that I've seen, or if not all, are within wetlands, and if they're not, then, yeah, there won't be any.
Are you doing HOAs, or will that be turned over to the county? HOAs? You doing HOAs?
We will. The roads will likely be under the counties, but within each neighborhood, and there'll probably be separate HOAs, yes, for the common area maintenance. Sorry?
Be a mix, okay. Because if you don't know, if things don't work right, they come stand where you're standing, and they...
A lot of things come back here, don't they? If they're not done right.
All right, Commissioner Stevens?
Any other questions or concerns?
I just, I mean, it's nice to have somebody that grew up here and understands, you know, the history that's down there, and, you know, your mom and your dad being from here. And I don't even know where you at anymore, but anyhow, it's good to see you coming back and doing what you know is right and what you know that would be the best for this community. Mary Ann, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And it's, you know, something I'm proud to be a part of. As I said, the first time I came here, and I, I wouldn't say that lightly, and I wouldn't be here lightly. I might be other places, but I wouldn't be here lightly.
And I applaud you, too, because you even took the time to meet with some of the residents from that area.
Yes.
That's another plus.
Yes, absolutely.
Another plus.
Absolutely.
All right. Oh, his ooze. Oh, that's your baby. Oh, that's your baby. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Motion second, we approve the rezoning request as, as presented. Discussion, I'll do that now, I was, Mr. Commissioner Frager reminded me, should we have been in public hearing because it was a rezoning, even though it was second rezoning, doesn't matter? You have to.
Still excellent choice.
You have to always, you have to always go into public hearing, even if it's a rezoning of something that's been rezoned? Do you? Alright, well then I'll apologize for my error then, is there a way to fix that on the floor? Well, let's do it this way, is there anyone in the public that wanted to speak to, to this project? Nobody signed up? Alright, Maria's on it, thank you so much. Alright, all in favor, show of hands, please. Alright, it's approved, Miss. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chair.
If you all would keep in touch with us, we'd appreciate that, so we can keep our eyes on that. Here's your Commissioner right here. Thank you again for the thought you put into it and for the consideration of the public, it means a lot to us. Alright, new business resolutions, ACCG 457B plan, is Ms. Laura, okay.
Good evening. I am here to talk about retirement.
Is that the theme for the evening?
And I wanted to share an option to enhance the current retirement plan offering for our employees at no cost to the county. And this is by adding a Roth 457B plan to our retirement plan offerings, right now we do a pre-tax 457B, and the Roth plan is a post-tax plan. So that way, when they are ready to retire, the contributions and earnings are tax-free. This is different from the current 457B plan, which is taxed when withdrawn. The Roth 457B would be an additional offering to the current pre-tax 457B, not a replacement, so that employees could participate in both if they so choose. And it also allows employees to roll over former employer post-tax retirement funds, thereby increasing the overall assets under management for the county. And more than two-thirds of the counties in Georgia are already taking advantage of this feature, including our neighbors in Bryan, Effingham, Bullock, Wayne, and Long Counties. So again, it, there's no cost to the county, it's simply something we would set up and allow employees to begin participating in at this upcoming open enrollment. And to make it happen, what we need is to sign a resolution to adopt an amendment to our current 457B deferred compensation plan, and then sign the adoption agreement itself.
Questions for Ms. Laura?
Laura, you said this will be taxed when.
Pre-tax.
When the law made, and the new plan.
The new plan is, is not taxed when withdrawn, because you're putting money in now with after-tax earnings. All of our other retirement plans now are pre-tax contributions.
Tell me again, what other plan did we have for the employees?
Well, we have the 401A.
401A.
And the 457B.
And you want to, this one is the?
It's a Roth 457B.
A Roth 457B, okay.
Roth, that's a Roth IRA.
Right.
Yes.
Now, that's more beneficial on, on the tax side too, right?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It depends on your situation, but, so you're using post-tax money now, but then when you, when you withdraw it as retirement income, it's tax-free. So it's good to have a blend.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what age is retirement?
Fifty-nine and a half.
With the county.
Four, the 401 and 457.
Same thing Liberty Region used to be, yeah. You can retire early, but you have to pay early. Alright, Chair, turn the motion.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution for the 457B plan.
Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Chair.
Motion second, we approve the resolution for 457B plan presented by Ms. Laura. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please.
I guess I, I don't believe I'm involved in that, but I'll vote for y'all to get a little time.
You trust me, Commissioner Walden.
Alright, Ms. Stevens, is your vote? Okay, alright.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Mosley got it? Thank you. Mr. Bob Saville?
He's gonna come in virtually, Miss.
He's gonna come in virtually? Alright, technology's gonna wait for us.
I'll be there.
There he is. Let's get his volume.
I thought he had a deer head in his office one time.
He got that bird.
I know he had a bird.
I don't know what kind of bird that is.
Oh, no, I was saying, singing.
Officer, you can hear us too.
You all loud enough?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mosley, you wanna lead up?
No, I was saying.
A little delayed.
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Saville has been putting together our proposal, and what he wants to do tonight is, is present what he's found. Our policy, our property policy starts on May 1st, and so he's basically giving some information, he's trying to finish it up. And what we want to do is bring the proposal back to the commission at the April 17 meeting for adoption, so they can go into effect by April 1. Bob?
Okay, you ready? Well, it's good to be back with y'all again, and Mr. Mosley and his staff have done a fantastic job to get it put together relatively short notice, because the meeting came first hand up. So, I'm going to share my screen with you here, so that you can put it over this screen over here. And, did y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is the worksheet we used last year, and the good news is, if you look all the way down to the bottom, you'll see there's a 3.79% increase. And I can say that I haven't delivered anything under 20% this year to anybody else.
Wow.
So, part of this is because of the foresight that Mr. Mosley and Joey had coming in last year, and allowed us to go to a self-insured program. And our goal is that we would continue to, to budget this expiring amount over here, 1.472, and, and that we would, well, this amount here, excuse me. And as we put those into budget, part of that funding would go to pay claims. This year, the good news is, we only have $16,000 in claims. And that was an auto claim, whereas in the past, we've had up in hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, very proud of the job everybody's done, including Sheriff's Park, on the claims. So, this premium right here went up a little bit, and, and that's because we have about 40 more units than we did last year. So that drove that premium up. A comment I'd like to make right here is, we've been working with Enterprise, and Enterprise has different limit thresholds. Unfortunately, for the vehicles we have in their program, it's only 300,000. We have three vans in there, three transportation vans from Recreation. And those are almost off lease, and so we're going to go ahead and take those, buy those out from Enterprise, get them off the lease, because Enterprise, for any multi-passenger vehicle over eight, eight employees, or eight people, requires $2 million limits.
Wow.
For the cost of getting to $2 million limits, we could just go buy the vans. So, it worked out that, and then if we, I think we're gonna buy a new one later in this policy year, we won't, that will not go under Enterprise. So primarily, what we have is pickup trucks, sheriff's vehicles, and private passenger vehicles, light trucks, those types of things. So, we find with these limits, the 300 plus the 450 adds up to the tort 750,000, which is a tort cap receiving cuts. So that's the main thing I wanted to get across tonight. As we go down here, none of this has changed significantly, other than you'll see that the property went up by about 6 million. Now, about four of that was, Mr. Mosley did a comprehensive analysis of all the equipment, and we found about 4 million dollars of equipment that felt like needed to be added. So you can see down here, we went from a high of 10 million up to 14 million in limits on your equipment, and then we, we added the new maintenance facility and, and replaced the old one with the new one, and that was, the netted out about 2 million more. So that was the change there, so that drove a little bit, but we got a decrease on the property rates. Believe it or not, it's, I don't get to say that word very much, but they have gone down for coastal exposure, even after.
Wow.
Yeah, amazing. The, I gotta give a shout-out to Clint, Cypher's had no claims and we looked really good there.
He's smiling. He was about to turn you down?
That's right, yeah, he had his finger. So anyway, we're, we're, I'm very pleased with this, this is mainly more assets, is why this is here. And, and like we did last year, we're just giving this to you to look at today, and then we'll vote at the mid-month meeting. So, Mr. Mosley, would you like to add anything?
Yes, sir, I would just like to add, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, as y'all are well aware, Joey expressed it, two years ago, the insurance, property and casualty on the coast, well, statewide it was taken a beating, and then for the coastal area, it really was, can I use the term, eaten us for lunch? And it was Joey had the vision to say, let's, and get with Bob, let's, let's try a different approach, and that's when we came into trying to do a self-insurance, so that's saved the county tremendously.
And to go, and the safety programs, everything we're doing has worked out well. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I can't tell you specifically, but we did have, as he mentioned, we did do an audit to identify all the vehicles that we had, and the Finance Department really did a great job of that. So I can get you that list.
So talk about the vans again, so since the vans were of age, it's, it's cheaper to?
What Bob shared with us, Enterprise were saying that, you know, they wanted the 2 million, and Bob said no, he kept on saying no. And one of the issues with, with vans that I learned from Bob is that when they get over a certain size, they're, they become easy to turn over.
Get tip over.
That increases us in terms of, of problem, having problems, and so what we, what we did, as he discussed, is buy a couple of the Enterprise vans that are getting close to come off the lease, so we don't have to have those issues imposed on us by Enterprise, and also a new van that we'll buy outright. And so that would save us in cost by just buying the vehicles versus trying to pay them through additional premiums cost.
Mr. Chairman, I want, do we have an inventory of, of the properties that we have insured, all of the properties?
Yes, sir.
So, any properties that we've got that county employees are in? The reason I'm asking this is, we had discussed the State Patrol building at one time, is that ours, or is that the state's?
It's ours.
It's ours? Okay.
I think that was the agreement, we would provide the building, they would provide the staff, and we would have the luxury of having them to patrol our local community. If I remember that correctly, have I got that close to being right?
I think it's understaffed, got there right now, I believe one or two got there.
Really?
I did.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wondered about that, thank you.
Alright, any more questions? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I guess this question's for, I, I don't, whoever can answer this one. I, I know this year, under the Gold Dawn, you know, it was, it was a bill that was presented and, and passed about insurance, and it's kind of, I guess, typically, set up the same way as, as it was in the state of Florida, and I know a lot of Floridians are, are feeling impact with that now. How, how, how would you think that'd impact us directly here in Liberty County with, with our fleet? Or do you think, do you see a significant, because like, like you said, I guess what, it was a 3, 3%, almost 4% increase? Do you see some type of change with that in, in the near future?
I, Mr. Mosley, I can take that, you're fine. The, self-insured, the tort legislation will have a greater impact on you than it would have before we self-insured, because it would take, it would take a five-year rolling average before this impact would be felt. And we already had the, the tort caps and so forth, that 750,000 we discussed, and, and the county enjoys more immunity, if you will, than a city would, because you're a political subdivision of the state. So with that, with that status, I think where we'll see our greatest benefit will be in the processing of the claims through the courts, and some of the things the government kept is put into that process through this tort. So we already had, we already had some statute for protection from these large claims. Primarily our autos where we, we see that. So, the answer to your question is, yes, I think we'll see some benefits, and we should see them within our retention, our $300,000 retention plan.
Okay, and then, and then also, Mr. Chair, I've noticed other counties or municipalities, whenever I'm traveling, especially, problems in Chatham County. Whenever you pass a county vehicle there, they have it, the label on it, and also, more importantly, it has like a number. So that county car might be 1013 or, or whatnot, is, is that something that, that we probably need to look into in the future? Or you want to talk about that offline?
Yeah.
I, I just know most counties or municipalities, their cars are labeled.
They, they would have the county logo on there.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about labels, well, car number.
Number one.
Right, number wise.
It's like a fleet number, I guess, perhaps.
Right.
And we can talk about it.
It does.
Yeah, but they do, they have like.
But normally, it's a little larger.
Two, zero, one, one, two, one, whatever, I've seen that too, alright, we'll, we'll look at it. Alright, thank you, Mr. Saville, we will see you next month. I'm sorry, just a second, mister.
I can provide those copies.
Thank you for the good news.
Okay, see you next month.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Contract Project Management Services?
Mr. Chair, uh, this is a contract with, uh, Mr. Brown. He's gonna help us on several projects, um, projects that he's been interested.
I think we're ready to vote.
He's gonna do that for three months to kind of help us, uh, through, uh, the next couple of months. So, uh, he's gonna work as needed and, uh, I would very much recommend that we. The project that he'd be working on is the Health Department, which y'all know is a massive project. Uh, it is probably at the twenty-five percent, uh, level in terms of completion. Uh, the second project is the, uh, new administrative building for EMS, which is just getting out of the ground. And the other is a special project that we're doing with the, um, uh, airport. So, those are projects that help us with finance, with information, and keeping us abreast, and working with the contractor. Yes, sir.
What if we have other new projects coming? Still bringing back on?
With, with, with the contract, he only agreed to do for the three months. He only agreed to do for three months. That's something that if y'all ask me to work with Mr. Brown, I would certainly do that. But those were the three projects that, that.
I, I, I think it, um, following up on that, we'll, we'll work with the three months, but I think our thought process is that as other projects come into play, and we will, um, like to entertain his expertise with those projects just as well. Cause I know, um, we're gonna talk about that, and we have more than. I know some projects are wrapping up, but EMS.
We've got Health Department, we've got EMS.
Yeah, so. So, you, so you may as well begin that conversation now, sir. We'll do, we'll do the three months knowing that, uh, yes, sir.
With the amount that was mentioned, is that a good amount, a good amount for a hour? Did y'all have a discussion on that?
That's kind of what the, the, um, discussion has been, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we kind of, um, chopped around and that's the comparable rate.
Project management expenses, sir.
Yeah.
Project management expenses.
Yeah. End of the day, it saved you a whole lot, yes, sir.
This, um.
Yes, sir.
This, um, I'll make a motion, we go ahead and, um, and hire the consulting firm of Brown to, to help us. I, I would like to say though, that there is a possibility that your three-month period, I mean, you know, you might work one month and have to come back another month. But I'm just saying that, uh, this is your home, so we want to do what's, what's right.
Well, soon as second, we approve the Agreement for Management Services with Mr. Brown for the three months, uh, as stated, knowing that we may have some future considerations and further discussion.
Chair, I've got one quick.
Sir.
With this project manager, we never had one before. Mr. Mosley, will we be able to see a chart, not a flow chart, to say when a project starts, to when a project ends? And other, will this lighten the load of our county engineer of looking over, of a project that we got in the county?
This has to do with the building aspect of it more than the engineering part of it.
Yeah, you.
I, I think Mr. Long is, the only buildings have been the pavilions, that's the only buildings that he's been involved with.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I mean, he, he's not hammering nails, he's managing the, the problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, how, you know, something happens during the construction that's out of his control, I mean, that's, that's not what, what we're talking about. He'll be talking about, um, managing, it's management services that, that we are, um, contracting with Mr. Brown for. Y'all, Trent handles the engineering, Kelly handles the.
Illegal.
Illegal stuff. And, um, you know, this is kind of all what Joey did while he was here. And, you know, so it should be a pretty smooth transition.
Got a motion on for?
Yes, sir. All in favor, show your hands, please. In our position, one. All right, motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add, if, if Mr. Brown decides that he does not want to do it anymore for us, that this Board of Commissioners needs to look at hiring.
Yeah, project manager.
A project manager or a contractor.
A contractor, yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I fully agree.
How many contractors do we have right now? We've got.
With all the building we have and construction.
Somebody looks after right-of-way acquisitions?
Uh, Trent contracts with somebody.
Yeah, but this, didn't Lenis do some of that? Would it with, with the roads?
No, no, he's with the Health Department.
Tillman did.
Mr. Lamar Tillman.
Lamar Tillman helped Trent on, on right-of-ways.
That's basically, you know, what, we need, we need to break the thing or whatever.
As, as needed. Yep, all right.
All right.
Summer food? Someone called me, they said because of what's happened in DC, they thought the summer food program had gone away, I said.
I, I touched bases with, uh, Ms. Michelle James, she's been intricately involved. She just received some training and, uh, she said it's still much intact.
Yay.
And so, tonight, Mr. Chair, uh, the program we talked today, uh, the program timeframe would go June the second through July the thirty-first, which is a kind, an extra week from, uh, years past. Um, and as part of the, she's already received the training, uh, the part now for tonight would be for you guys to, um, hire her, become your representative, and she can start working on completing the grant and hiring the necessary staff and start putting plans together for summer food. Uh, one of the things that we, uh, asked last year, and we would like to ask this year's is for, we had seventeen sites, if y'all desire more sites, then please get, let me know and I'll get with her to see if we can make that happen.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do you remember last year, Miss?
Recommendation?
Recommendation that she would be willing to work with us?
Oh, I got his back.
Thank you. That, uh, she would be willing to work with us this year on the summer food program? So, I think we probably need to just go ahead and touch bases with her and see if she's still willing to do that.
I will.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, y'all had also asked me about the possibility of bringing the, uh, LCCC of the Commercial Standards. And Ms. James met with the Health Department back in, uh, February. Uh, it was, it would take about twenty thousand dollars to, to bring the building up to, to, um, Commercial Standards. That's the, um, commercial stove, commercial refrigerator, and putting in sinks and some other items that need to be done to the facility.
And, and, and that's at what location?
The complex.
The complex?
Mm-hmm. John D. McIver Auditorium, yeah. Twenty thousand?
Yes, sir.
We want to bring it up standard in order to do the program in-house?
To make the meals, hot meals.
Right, okay.
Right now, to make the cold meals.
Okay, okay. So, they offer hot or cold or?
Right now, it's, it's primarily, predominantly cold meals.
Okay, but you saying next summer it may be hot?
It, the, the question came up, would, how much would it cost to, to bring the facility up to provide hot meals, just in case we wanted to do that as a, a option?
And we'll make that a budget consideration, going through the budget?
Twenty thousand?
That's very.
Listen, unless someone, is that a, is that a SLOSS eligible? I'm looking around the corner. Retired.
Joey's not in the room anymore.
Is that a?
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Mr. Mosley.
Hey, he knows how to, um, navigate, not that you don't, Mr. Mosley. I don't know if the, the referendum had anything that could cover such a.
Maybe our, our person.
Well, the, the program that's, that I've seen, and of course, in, in Ever County, they got this SNAP program. Why can't we get some just designated SNAP money? But all we've got to do is.
Yeah, that's.
Or first, uh, what is that, First Harvest? No, First, the one out of Savannah.
Yeah, she's worked with them.
Harvest, uh.
First Harvest.
First Harvest.
Second Harvest.
Second Harvest.
My bad, First, Second, yeah.
Yeah.
She, she was able, if y'all remember, she was able last year or two, uh, she got directly from a distributor, she got some of the staff and they put together the meals. And she, uh, sent up funds for distribution this time, I think in almost eight years that we got back a sizable amount of, of, uh, money reimbursed to us.
There we.
Because of her efforts. And, uh, she also increased the numbers of, 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 uh, family service.
I know she was ambitious, I remember that.
Right. Which, which is, you know, it's, it's a definitely a great program.
So, they, they would, um, you say hot meals, it, it wouldn't be, I mean, for years, it was just sandwiches.
Sandwiches.
Okay, so, a hot meal, so they would microwave it or they're not gonna cook the bologna, are they?
They would actually cook the meal, put it in a, you know, the, the pouch, special pouches and take it up.
The, the standard meal that they've had for fifty years, would they warm, would they warm that up or would it be something totally different, like rice and gravy?
It'd be like a meals on wheels kind of thing, yeah.
And, and how would they serve that to the people?
They'd put it in a, uh, the, the pouch to keep it warm and in a special container.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, but that's, I mean.
Kind of like a, um, TV dinner kind of concept.
Okay.
And they, they go to the distribution point and then they take it to, to Riceburg?
Yeah.
How is it, how is it kept warm?
You, you know, like the pizza, they have the little special pouch to keep it warm.
They would have a special pouch like that.
Yeah, but, um, some of these.
Oh, what you talking about, once it gets there to the place?
No, no, some of these locations have like seventy-five kids. So, you, you have a pouch for each, each meal or you just put them all in?
I think it's a, it's a big pouch that they would put it.
It'd have to be for seventy-five.
A pouch is, yeah.
Yes, sir.
But, but Mr. Chair, I, I, I think, I think that the twenty thousand dollar, I guess, estimate or guestimate that we're looking at, uh, whenever we looking at the, the entire scope of things and, and the amount of people we'd be able to provide a particular service, I, I think that's a minute number, in my humble opinion.
Yeah. Can you give us particulars on that, uh, sir?
Mr. Mosley.
But also, I think that's a very conservative number whenever you're talking about putting, putting, uh, a, a commercial kitchen in.
So, it must have most of what it needs, just.
When you calculate, when you're looking at those figures, make sure you figure in the upgrade of the fire system, the fire extinguisher system, which is gonna be a whole lot more than I think that twenty thousand. Cause you have to have that system overstowed, that hood system.
Oh, yeah, I mean, right, yeah.
But like I say, it's not.
Yeah.
That, that twenty thousand, I'm not saying, you know, it, it is worth it, but.
Right, but that's very, like I said, that's a very conservative number.
Obviously, you had someone to look at, who, who, who did your?
Um, the, the Health Department came down.
Did they?
We'll, we'll, but I don't know, like you said, I don't know if that encompassed the, the fire system. I know that was a hood and the.
Right.
Oven and the, um, refrigerator.
The Health Department, didn't they?
The sinks that are required.
Well, hey, if, if the Health Department came.
It's pretty good.
I went in one other day and it was about four thousand square foot lodge. And they didn't have an oven in it.
Was, was it in District One?
No, it was in District One, it was in Long County. You figured you could get anything over there, but anyhow, they didn't even have an oven, all they had was like a warmend oven.
Some people do.
Couldn't have anything like that in it, in a, in a place like that.
Yeah.
Now, I know people, we used to put grills at some of them, but I don't believe we do that anymore.
No, no.
Quit with them, except for Stafford Park.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need, uh, to approve?
Her as the coordinator, sir?
Was it Ms. Ham?
That's what you request? Ms. James?
Ms. James.
What's her first name, please?
Nichelle.
Nichelle James.
Chair and ten, chair and ten a motion.
I make that motion, Chairman.
Second.
And for the discussion, we know we're gonna explore the, um, kitchen for.
She was here last summer.
I hate to vote, somebody don't know who it is.
She, she came last time.
She came last summer, I don't know where she's at or not.
The only time I heard it was from Mr. Floyd.
Uh-uh, 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 she replaced him. Yeah, she replaced him.
Very energetic.
I don't know, but she replaced him.
But y'all, y'all, I mean, y'all, if you didn't understand their.
Yes, sir, we're good.
And she did.
And she did, she did, she did a great job last year.
All in favor, show your hands, all right. What's your question? Thank you. Administrative report?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I put a report before everyone. Uh, summer youth program, um, applications have been received. Uh, last I saw, we were well over thirty and, uh, probably close to forty. I think we'll be able to fund about thirty positions. Uh, we have interviews scheduled for Saturday, April the tenth, from nine to twelve PM. And we would, for any of you like to participate, we would love for you to come. Uh, I've attached a flyer that shows, uh, our calendar for June. And also, Laura is here and, uh, we are having our Family Fun Day this coming Saturday. And, uh, Laura, you wanna just give a quick shout out to, uh, Kirch?
A Commissioner's come?
Yes, come.
So, this Saturday, April fifth, is our second annual Family Fun Day. So, uh, we've, our Administration Department has tried to put together a employee picnic type of event that we'll do year after year. And so, this Saturday from eleven to three, we are having it inside the Schuman Recreation Center. And it will feature, uh, a lot of games and activities, kind of like Family Game Night. And we'll have activities for the kids, we'll have food. Uh, and at one o'clock, we are doing an employee basketball tournament, uh, three M, three half-court tournament. And we have eight teams from across all county departments competing in the tournament. Uh, so we do invite you to come, you and your family. And we have hundreds of employees signed up to come already, so I think it's going to be another very successful event. And we'd love to see you there to stop by the Schuman Center this Saturday. You wanna sign up for a team, Commissioner team?
And you're looking for volunteers, too.
Yes, we need helpers. If you want to call bingo or sit at the welcome table and hand out meal tickets, I'd love to have you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, y'all, y'all have a list of things we're, we're sharing, I'm gonna just hit two more things and then I'll be out your way. Uh, we're currently, uh, working through the budget process. Uh, we've met with ten departments as of today, and I can report to you that nearly everyone has been, uh, reasonable in their request. Um, we will, um, summarize and put that together. We, we know we got a couple more, uh, uh, departments to, um, interview and, and question, and we know that we'll be bringing some of those to you guys. So, we just wanted to warn you in advance. And also Samantha, we're bringing the capital improvement, uh, budget to you at the seventeenth meeting for approval. Um, one of the things that came out of this, the, uh, commission was our water fees and water rates. Um, we want to put them on the April seventeenth commission for your review and consideration. And also, we also met with, uh, or been in discussion with Ms. Sap, and we've got to update that contract. And so, we got her new numbers and we're having a county attorney to review the, uh, contract. And we also want to bring that, so that will be a companion piece of the water rates and the, uh, new contract with them. And lastly, uh, Public Works Building, uh, Trent is coordinating with a landscaping company to finish the landscaping for the facility. Uh, Joey issued several POs to do a security gate there and to renovate the old radar building, provide additional, uh, uh, storage for us. And, uh, I've reached out to, uh, Rob Sharp with the Contractor Office. He said that, uh, May, I asked him about some dates in May, uh, to be good dates, and also reached out to the architect, have not heard back from him. And I talked to the chairman and, and we think that, uh, May the twenty-third is a good date. Um, so if you could circle that on your calendar, May the twenty-third.
But it's Public Works.
Public Works, uh.
Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting. Yes, sir.
You're talking about Public Works, I was down there this morning. Did somebody spray the grass and kill it?
What was it, sir?
The grass by the Public Works Department. The grass by the Public Works Department, it's all brown. It's dead. Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious.
It might have had rhododendron out there, and it died because of the heat.
But in a certain section, it's still green, but right, all up by the road in front of the building.
Yeah, probably, rhododendron.
But, what I'll think, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Did we ever come up to a conclusion to change the date of the June nineteenth meeting?
Remind me about that discussion.
Juneteenth.
Mr. Chair, one last thing before you go.
I guess this is it, after this?
Yes, sir.
One last thing on the back is all my contact information for y'all need to reach me, so.
Let's look at the, thank you, thank you for reminding me. Didn't ring a bell, and I apologize. One, two. So we have the option of moving it up a Thursday? Or down, or down a, Tuesday?
Let's try that. Let's, 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 let's try a first and third Tuesday and see how that works out for us.
One, two.
Are we going with the seventeenth?
That's a Tuesday?
Yep.
Sure, let's do it.
Is that correct?
That's good, my, my calendar is good. Commissioner Gill.
But you, you know, if, if I can make it, I'll be here.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I did have.
Changing the June meeting to the June seventeenth. Yes, sir.
Did you, did Ms. Bell talk about the Great American Cleanup this Saturday? But that's, that's what we got. When you, it's usually a big announcement.
Rollout.
And the common, the comp, competition between the city and the county. And when she was here two weeks ago, I, when they came up here for some presentation to take a picture. I asked her when was it going to be, and she said April fifth. And if it's April fifth, and then we got the county. You mentioned Laura just talked about.
Yeah.
But the, the Great American Cleanup is April every year, just like Rivers Alive is October every year. But there was no announcement or nothing about it this year. And I didn't know until she mentioned it at the last meeting.
But you're, you're, you're right. I remember seeing something, but I saw the city of Heinzville on that flyer or something.
So just Heinzville?
That's, I'm trying to pull it up, but I can't pull it, you know, like young people can't pull it so quickly.
But, no, I, I always thought that.
But it had been a, like a competitive kind of thing.
Were they having the cleanup with Beverly County?
The Great American Cleanup for county employees is also Saturday, right before the Family Fun Day. So we're making a day of it.
Ah, okay.
Great American Cleanup first, then Family Fun Day, leading right into that.
What time is the Family Fun Day?
Eleven to three.
And the Great American Cleanup is?
We start at ten, we sign in at nine forty-five, and they'll be cleaning up the areas around the campus of James Brown Park and the YMCA area.
So they're already on site. Okay, okay, okay.
They coordinated a little something.
We'd have a clean county after that. After those seventeen.
We just cleaned up the James Brown Park.
It wasn't advertised like it normally is.
No, usually she makes it competitive in all kinds of, yeah.
No flyer, no.
I didn't, I saw something, but.
It is a trophy that goes with it.
Yeah. And we always, always. Yeah, I was going to say, we always accuse you of.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Moser, can you make sure that you send out a reminder about the Public Works ribbon cutting? You said May twenty-third?
We'll do that.
If you can, thank you.
What we usually do, like a ten o'clock thing? Don't we usually do something like?
That's the Friday before Memorial Day.
Right, and, and, and.
I thought Memorial Day was the.
It's the next weekend, I think.
I thought it was the next weekend.
It's the next weekend.
And then also, both events that's going on this Saturday.
I may be wrong.
If you can.
Memorial Day is the, the fourth Friday, the fourth Monday in, um.
May.
Yes, it's, yeah, it is, it is, it is a Friday before.
Yeah, that's true.
It's a Friday before.
Good catch.
You must, you must have plans with it. We could, want to move it up on Friday?
Is this an open portion, because we're not on the agenda? I'm just wondering if we could talk about our chicken?
No, sir, it's not open portion.
It's not?
No, sir, thank you.
Are we sticking to the agenda?
Yeah, we are.
We're still on the agenda.
Yeah. So Commissioners. It's not, I, I'm good for twenty-third, but if you all, somebody's going to be out of town, then.
Oh, yeah, that, I was just wondering.
I'm good with the twenty-third right now.
Okay.
It'll be that morning.
It'll be that morning, okay. All right.
Twenty-third is good.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for that.
Okay, all right. Does that complete your report, sir?
Yes, sir.
It does, all right. Anything else for the good of the order?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is that second? Is it in favor? All right, okay. Now we adjourn, sir.